Let's pray. Father God, we just come to you in the night and thank you for this day, Father. We thank you for all your many blessings you laid upon each and every one of our lives, every day, Father. We just give you the praise and glory for who you are, and we just acknowledge, Father, that you are sovereign. God, tonight, I just pray that you have a special blessing upon this meeting, Father. Just pray, God, that you just give us wisdom and discernment, just help us to decision that we make tonight, Father. Just please you, we give you the praise and glory, and thank you for your son, Jesus, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I am here in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Vice President Abshear.
Here.
Mr. Anjapan.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stellig.
Here.
And Mr. Kilroy.
Here.
Everyone pray.
Thank you. Number four. Receive report from staff regarding input from the public since June 24, 2020, with reference to the South Defenders Monument. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. The special meaning of the police jury being held this evening comes at the conclusion of a period of active listening by the police jury that began with an official statement from President Tony Gilry on June 24, 2020. I would like to read some of the texts from that statement just as a refresher.
Point of order, Mr. President. It's, we're having a difficult time hearing Mr. Brain, I mean, uh, Mr. Bean.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
I'll speak a little closer. Thank you. From the June 24 statement, Mr. Gilry stated, "Because of passionate views from all sides regarding the monument, the police jury is in a period of active listening at this time. We are reaching out to people and groups in our communities to make sure we are hearing what the wide range of voices are saying. That is one of our most important roles as elected officials. During this period, we ask that all of our citizens display a mutual respect for differing opinions, and we ask for everyone's support in our efforts to address this matter in a sincere and meaningful way." Thank you. So that was back in June. Seven weeks have passed since the police jury statement was released, and during that time, we have received a tremendous amount of input from the public. People have communicated to the police jury in many ways. Written correspondence has come in the form of emails, letters, postcards, hand-delivered notes, and we also received a few voicemails and transcribed those and put them in writing, provided copies. This was taken through today at noon, so if you go back, it's been right at seven weeks. Our tally shows that we have received 945 written responses from the public during this period. And just as a matter of reference, so you can see it, at the, to my left, at the end of the tabletop near Jessica are all the responses, which, of course, y'all have provided copies of those. Of the total responses, 878 of the 945 were against relocating the monument, and 67 were for relocating the monument. In addition to all the written correspondence, police jurors personally received hundreds of calls, all told. Uh, this is a bit of a guess, but I think probably if you totaled all 15 of you in conversations we've had, it probably exceeds 1,000. Uh, not per juror, but, um, the people have been very vocal on this, and, but, y'all asked for the input. Police jurors also met with community members with various points of view on the monument's location. And lastly, comments also appeared regularly during this whole period through local TV and news media outlets, newspaper media outlets, as well as social media. So in summary, Mr. President, this active listening process has been an effective one in terms of generating a substantial amount of public input on a current topic of interest. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. It's been a great report. Item five. Consideration of moving the South Defenders Monument from the grounds of the Calhoun Parish Courthouse. Move on motion to moving the South Defenders Monument from the Calhoun Parish Courthouse grounds. I have a motion by Mr. Smith.
A second to move the monument.
And I have a second by Mr. Lewis. We will hear first from speakers in favors of moving the monument, followed by a 10-minute recess before hearing speakers in opposition. As a reminder, each speaker will be limited to no more than two minutes. All comments must be directly toward the jury, and all speakers must be respectful in their comments. Decisions from jurors will follow after all speakers are concluded. With that, our first speaker is, Ms... Did I call out the name?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Rosie Glapion, please.
Is she coming? Okay.
Ms. Glapion, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Well, I keep my mask on, but, my name is Rosie Glapion, and I live at 903 Louisiana Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Glapion.
And I'm here today to speak. I'm very, very, very strongly in favor of removing that Confederate monument, especially from public property. I don't have a problem with it on private property, but public property, to me, is a big problem. But what I want to ask you today is to think about this. I don't recall any time in history, after the two world wars, when any group of Japanese citizens came and said, "Hey, what about if we put up a monument to some of the Japanese generals and soldiers who fought in the World War?" Or even after the war with Germany, we didn't have German citizens coming and saying, "We would like to have something, a monument or something to honor German generals and German soldiers." Because in these two world wars, these countries fought against the United States of America. We considered them our enemies. They were our enemies because we fought against them in the wars that the United States won. Now, the only difference between these world wars and the Civil War-
30 seconds.
-is that the Civil War was fought on, on American property. But what I do believe strongly, we have the racial issue with the monument, we have the white supremacy issue with the monument, but I think it's also very important to remember that it is an un-American issue, because to support, to have a group of soldiers, generals, who fought against the United States of America, and we want to publicly honor them, is un-American. That's the bottom line.
That's fine. Thank you, Ms. Glapion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glapion, for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will have Ms. Louise, Ms. Louise Malvo.
We have-
Do we have them queued up back there?
Ms. Malvo, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Lois Booker Malvo. I live at 717 South Franklin Street, here in Lake Charles, Louisiana. And now, I just want to say, I am in opposition of the statue because the Confederate soldier fought to maintain slavery. Many will say the Confederate soldier fought to protect their land. The whole thing is a lie. Slavery was one of the most ungodly and inhumane crime. Me being a black woman, the pain is real in my soul. I do not hate anyone, but I pray that God would destroy the evil demon of hatred. God is destroying all symbols of hatred all over the world. The statue will be removed. This is a new day. God is our multitude against all hatred. The people of this United States must stand together. We all must stand against racism and hatred. May we all pray that this city, Lake Charles, Louisiana, remove the Confederate soldier. I pray God that you all make the right decision. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lois. Ms. Lois. Uh, next will be Dr. Cole. Dr. Cole, state your name and-
Good afternoon to each of you.
Dr. Cole, state your name and that-
After 42 years being in my position-
Ms. Cole, Ms. Cole, Ms. Cole. State your name and address for the record, please.
Name and address.
Name and address for the record.
What is that?
Your name and address?
My name? Sister Louise Cole.
And your address?
2817 and 1/2, Lake Charles, Louisiana, and also Cameron.
Okay.
2817 and 1/2, Fritz and Rider Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
Okay.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon again to each of you, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity to be in here. Again, after 42 years in the position I'm in, I think I need to be here and say a few words to each of you. Now, we are here for peace, justice, and freedom for all. When something wrong, we need to fix it. Something is wrong, let us work on it and work together and fix it, and God will bless us all. We all God children. We all got to stand up for right and righteousness. I could say more, but I think that's enough. Thank you so much. Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Huh? Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. Next is Dr. Cole.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Cole, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Charles Cole, 2817 and 1/2, Fritz and Rider, as my mother stated. To such an august body, I am most baffled by what we see in Washington and even in our good city here. People of color, we are very disturbed by the racial scars of the past of slavery. Now, I have no problem with the marker, but it should be put in a museum or the proper place. This is public property. And every time you pass by and see that, it brings it back hurt, scars, and tension. Now, if we want to be seaming it all together, we got to come together and work together. And if we do that, God will seamen us together, and we'll be a blessed and positive city. God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. All right. Next, we have Brandon Shoemaker. Mr. Shoemaker, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brandon Shoemaker. I live at 4009 Jandy Street in Lake Charles. Uh, today, I'm here as a direct descendant of at least 11 Confederate soldiers. Uh, but I want to talk a little bit about the history of the so-called Heritage Organization that erected the monument in 1915. Uh, from its beginning in 1894, the United Daughters of the Confederacy has seen itself the defenders of Confederate culture, which are intertwined with slave culture. They campaigned to vindicate their Confederate fathers and brothers' traitorous actions as patriotic, to rectify their humiliation and military defeat, and worked to preserve the cherished values of white Southerners. Uh, in 1902, Texas UDC President Adelia Donovan stated that the group's grave, very grave responsibility was not only loyalty to members, memories, but loyalty to principles, and those principles were of white supremacy. Thus, in 1915, Calhoun Parish's UDC made it stand for white supremacy with its South Defenders Monument. No black people were consulted in the years 1911 to 1915 that this monument was planned. Um, the keynote speaker that day- The keynote speaker that day, Senator John H. Overton, said in 1944, after a Supreme Court ruling eliminated all-white primaries, that the South at all costs...
Thirty seconds.
...will maintain the rule of white supremacy. I would say that the monument should be moved to a historically significant site off of public property, and that would be the Niblets Bluff Park in Vinton, where it was, the area was known as Fort Niblet and was a Confederate supply area that helped them to...
Time.
...defeat the United States at the Battle of Mansfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Next, we have Ms. Janet Alluret. Ms. Janet, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Janet Alluret, Forty-two and Nine Ryan Street, Lake Charles. And many of you know I'm a historian at McNeese, and I'm not speaking for McNeese, opinion's my own, but I do teach classes in this subject. New South is my specialty, and I have plenty of reading material that I could give to anyone who would like to know more about it. But I'll be real brief here and say that I think public statues like this one should come with an expiration date. They're not sacred, they're not sacrosanct, they're pictures of a moment in time, and values change over time, and therefore, the way that we commemorate ourselves publicly should change as well. And this statue went up in 1915, when, as Brandon said before me, African-Americans had been completely disempowered, and it was a Jim Crow system, and this monument commemorates that. And so, it's not a unifying symbol. And is that really what we want today? A symbol like this, which is very divisive and which is very offensive and creates such strong resentment in many of the parish's citizens today, including me, right? Who feel like this statue should not be, again, fetishized. It should not be a shrine, shrine, and it should not harm our relationships with other people in our parish. We should try to represent everybody here, and this statue does not do that. It is not a unifying symbol, it is a divisive symbol. I do not agree that these people were patriots, they fought against the United States.
Thirty seconds.
And as a historian, I'll just say one more thing before I leave. As a historian, I can tell you that people who make the right decisions, whether or not they are popular, are the ones that history remembers favorably. People who make the popular decisions, which we can look back on and say, with a different moral lens, were the wrong ones, end up on the ash heap of history. And I would just ask you to think about where you want to end up in the minds of historians.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alluret. Next, we have Jeanette DeWitt Kyle. Ms. Kyle, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeanette DeWitt Kyle, Sixty-seven Zero Nine Bond Meadow Lane, Lake Charles, Louisiana, Seven Oh Six Oh Five. When you vote on whether to remove this monument, and you should vote to remove it, it may be helpful to borrow a standard from the Louisiana Code of Judicial Conduct. Since the Code of Judicial Conduct exists to promote public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary, you should have the same principles in mind when you decide the fate of symbols on the courthouse lawn or any other public grounds. The canons of the Code of Judicial Conduct prohibit judges from even the appearance of impropriety or partiality. A judge cannot do things that may give a bad impression regardless of whether the judge's intentions were harmless. The appearance of impropriety standard eliminates personal feelings as a justification for behavior that some people may find problematic. You also have an ethical duty to uphold public confidence in our courts and our government. This means your personal feelings about the Confederacy, about this monument, or the political atmosphere surrounding this issue are inappropriate as a basis for your decision. You have been told that people find this monument offensive. It is offensive. You have an ethical obligation to take it down and keep it off any public property where its offensive message will continue to appear tolerated by our parish government. And my last thought is this, that I'm just saying to you as a mother, you need to see this monument for what it commemorates, which is a violent uprising meant to create a racist state that would ensure to this day that black children, born to this day, would be chattel, would be separated from their parents, would be bought and sold like farm equipment. If you want to show children today that they are precious, that they are loved, that they are equal, that they are respected, then get this statue out of their faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt Kyle. Next is Ms. Cabrera Swallow. Oh, Isabella?
Isabella.
I'm sorry. Ms. Isabella Swallow. Ms. Swallow, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Isabella Swallow, Twenty-two Hundred West McNeese Street. Am we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
I know I've spoken with most of you before. I want to start by saying that I know what you will hear from the other side, and I offer you this. Atticus Finch, from the book To Kill a Mockingbird, said, "You never really understand a person until you consider things from his point of view, until you climb in his skin and walk around in it." I'm offering my perspective as a sixteen-year-old who attends Barb High School. This statue has impacted me as a young white student. I cannot begin to imagine the pain it brings my young black friends. I know there is political pressure, and I know this can be uncomfortable. But right now, we look to you for leadership and action. One day, I will be telling my children about this meeting and your decision. You are making history right now. Don't be on the wrong side. Make the right decision and choose to move the statue. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swallow. Next, we will have Darius Clayton. Mr. Clayton, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Darius Clayton, Twenty-three Thirty-four Orchid Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, Seven Oh Six Oh One. Forty-eight point seventy-four percent of the city's population is African-American, and we're still having discussions. This is my third time having discussions about something that is knowingly offensive. Six thousand five hundred black men, women, and children were lynched between 1865 and 1950. Where are their statues at? Emmett Till was beaten and lynched in 1955. Why aren't we commemorating him in front of the courthouse lawn? If that statue stays, I vote that we engrave all six thousand five hundred names on the statue. White supremacy is when a majority of the people come and we tell you exactly what it is that we want, and then you tell us what's better for us. You tell us what we ought to have. Fifteen years ago, my father was upset with the system. Fifteen years later today, I am upset. I have a six-year-old son, and fifteen years, he's going to be twenty-one, and I'll be damned if I allow him to suffer some of the consequences that I have to go through today.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, can't use words like that and everything.
If you choose to take down, if you don't choose to take down a statue, you're saying that you devalue us, you're saying that we don't have a voice, you are saying, what you're saying is, "We do not matter." And I can tell you this now, if you choose not to take the statue down, this is not over.
Thirty seconds.
This is not over. This is just the beginning. I'm only thirty years old, and there's a group of people way behind me. We are the revolution. Take the statue down, or I promise you, it's going to be your fault what happens to the city afterwards. The revolution is coming.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Mr. Clayton.
Now, I'm going to protest.
Next is Ms. Jennifer Ryan. Ms. Ryan, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Twenty-six, Twenty-six Hamreed Road, Lake Charles.
Okay, and your name?
Oh, Jennifer Ryan. Okay, am I ready?
Oh, you're ready, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two years before the United States Constitution was adopted, our government compromised and declared that people who looked like me were only three-fifths a human being. In March of 1857, the Supreme Court, who are the interpreters of the Constitution, doubled down by standing, stating in the landmark Dred Scott Decision that black people, and I quote, "are not citizens of the Constitution and can therefore claim none of the rights and privileges." From 1861 to 1865, this country engaged in the Civil War, which began because of the expansion of slavery. I know that many would disagree, but I can assure you that with obtaining my master's degree in history, it gives me the authority to speak on that this is a fact. On July ninth, 1868, Congress overturned the eleven-year-standing Dred Scott Decision with the Fourteenth Amendment, which defined citizenship. Nineteen years after the Supreme Court ruled that races should be separate but equal, the statue was constructed. This statue was placed only two years after Harriet Tubman died. Two years, let that sink in. This statue was constructed in the days of Jim Crow, when drinking out of colored water fountains and going through colored-only entrances was experienced by people like my parents. This statue was constructed when black people were not allowed to have a voice and treated equally before the law. But, but now that we have a voice, I hope that you are listening. I know that this statue is a part of many people's history, including my own, but unlike many of you, I do not have the luxury of knowing my diverse heritage and DNA that flows through my veins. I ask that you remove the statue, but do not destroy it, but if you choose to leave it standing, I ask that you, the police jury and the city council, please place a statue alongside of it for future generations. Let this new statue represent freedom from oppression, freedom from hatred, and let it be a true representation of what it means to be an American, free. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Next is Derek Thornton. Mr. Thornton, state your name and address for the record, please.
Derek James Thornton, Five Twenty-Fourth Ness Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana. I know many of y'all already, so, good. Good afternoon. I want to let you know that I'm not here to plead a case against taking down the statue. That has been done enough. I am not here to remind you of the history behind the statue or the Confederacy, because that also has been done enough. Only many of you, I think, and I have already heard, have decided already to not believe it. What I am here for is to tell you that we see you. We see all of you, and we see what you stand for. We have read your emotionless responses online and watched you as you sat in silence while we tried to get a voice from you to hear what you thought. We have already been told in secret what many of you have already chosen and where you choose to stand today, and it is already depressing that we know that so many have already decided to stand on the wrong side of history. So, unless some of you have had a change of heart in the past twenty-four hours, your choice today is to stand continuously against the black citizens and taxpayers of Calhoun Parish, as well as the black jurors to whom you shake their hands every time you start one of these meetings. Yet, we see you all, even the black jurors, and we ask you, even though we know we can't get a response, why do you continuously allow racism and symbols of racism...
Thirty seconds.
...more of a voice and forum than you do the people who have been affected by it? We see all of you with businesses and business interests in black communities who welcome black dollars and black votes, but openly, openly are ignoring black voices. And today, when you vote and you make your decision and you choose your good trouble, if you vote the wrong way, I want to remind you that we will also, the people, choose our good trouble. You have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Mr. Thornton. Next, we have Ms. Natalie Lawton. Ms. Lawton, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Natalie Lawton, Seven Twenty-Six Ryan Street, Lake Charles, Seven Oh Six Oh One. It's a risk and a privilege to be here today. It's a risk and a privilege to be here today. For too long, a monument to white supremacy has loomed over a public building dedicated to justice. Why should the constituents of Calhoun Parish be forced to maintain a memorial in honor of the Confederate states of America, a nation founded by the brutality of enslavement? The South's Defenders Monument should be removed from taxpayer property because it represents a short-lived and defeated nation, helps to further the false lost cause narrative, and is the antithesis of the supposed balance offered by the criminal justice system. The Robert E. Lee chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy erected this monument with financial help from the parish fifty years after the Civil War ended, in an attempt to rewrite history, which affects our culture today. While many argue that this was a reconciliation project, it was originally intended as a monument to Confederate veterans and to honor the memory of Robert E. Lee. Stating otherwise is a big lie that has been told over and over. How much money has the parish spent on this monument? The jury appropriated taxpayer, taxpayer funds in support of the statue in 1911, 1914, 1915, and 1917, and rebuilt the foundation in 1946. Adjusted for respective rates of inflation and based on these incidences alone, the parish has spent over ninety-one thousand dollars on this monument. This is already too much, but there is an even bigger cost. If you're interested in the total fiscal impact, I would strongly advise you to contact the Public Records Department of our parish to request financial records, just to see how much we've spent. This issue's gone on for decades. Constituents had come before the city council and police jury again and again and again, and pled with its members to remove a statue that does not accurately represent our multicultural community. Will my young child also have to come before the jury in another twenty years, begging to remove this monument to hate? Time will not be kind to those who stand in the way of progress and to those who harm a real opportunity for communities to heal after so much struggle for racial equality. Stand on the right side of history and take down the monument to hate because the cost is much too great a burden to bear with your own names. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. This way, Ms. Lawton. Next is Mr. Jacob Lawton. Mr. Jacob, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I, Jacob Lawton, Seven Twenty-Six Ryan Street, Lake Charles. The Confederate War was erected in 1915 at the initiative of the Daughters of the Confederacy. The UDC's mission is to revere the memory of Confederate veterans. Besides building monuments, the UDC also busied themselves in shaping public perceptions of the war. Their central faith was that the South had not fought to preserve slavery, and when confronted with the fact that slavery was the root of the conflict, they dismissed it as a false smear campaign. They used their clout to lobby state legislatures to only accept textbooks that were in line with lost cause mythology, and their efforts worked. Through their activism, they created generations of Southerners who were taught to believe the moonlight and magnolious version of history. This has been their most impactful contribution. Lost cause myths are easily debunked. One need only read the word to the Confederates themselves. Take this line from the Louisiana Declaration of Secession. "The people of the slaveholding states are bound together by the same necessity and determination to preserve African slavery. All the Southern states share similar symptoms." How about these conflicting words from former Confederate Vice President Alexander Stephens, who in 1861 said slavery is a cornerstone to Southern society? He then claimed it as the cause of the war. Just a few decades later, he'd write a textbook that claimed the war was a noble but doomed effort on the part of the South to preserve self-government against federal intrusion. And it had little to do with slavery. Yes. So despite the post-war public relations campaign, slavery was undeniably the center of the decision to declare war. Ergo, the memorial at the courthouse is one to soldiers who fought to keep slavery and white supremacy institutionalized in law. The stories we believe about our past shape our views of the present. If folks believe that slavery is not really a crime against humanity, but simply a benign institution of the past, things like poll taxes and literary tests would hardly pass as misdemeanors. By removing white racism from the narrative and denying the problems it causes...
Time, sir.
...the lost cause myth and memorials like the South Defenders Statute and ills like that.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. Next is Mr. Rusty Havens. Mr. Rusty, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rusty Havens. I live at nineteen-hundred Prejean Drive, Lake Charles. I run an anti-human trafficking organization. People from the United Nations, to the White House, to our local city government, all call human trafficking slavery. And I would hope that this city government would never put up a... And I would hope that this city government would never put up a statue of Jeffrey Epstein or Miss Maxwell or anyone like that. And to me, this idol of slavery that we currently have up is the same thing. It's all slavery, and I want it removed. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Next is Mr. Devin Corbello. Mr. Devin, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Devin Corbello, 690 Lakewood Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70605. Police jurors, thank you for holding this special meeting to allow us to express our concerns regarding the South defenders monument. I would like to highlight what the monument means to our community from a public art perspective. According to the American for Public Art statement on the importance of public art, public art activates the imagination and encourages people to pay attention and perceive more deeply the environment they occupy. Public art stimulates learning and thought about art and society and about our interconnected lives. Art displayed in public is intended to give us pride in our community. However, the South defenders monument causes division and anger. Both sides have strong feelings about it. On one hand, those that are defending it say that this is a, that, that it's there to celebrate the Confederate soldiers who lost their lives during the Civil War, although the statue was erected during the Jim Crow era in 1915. On the other, it represents a dark time in our past where a brother fought against brother to defend the ownership of other human beings. That's a past that should not be forgotten, but it also should not be celebrated, especially not on public lands. If you consider what lands that statue occupy, you realize that it's in front of a building meant for truth and justice for all. It's also in a land where adoption ceremonies take place for hundreds of children every year out of foster care. These children walk out of that courthouse to start a second chance at a life full of hopes and dreams that wasn't available to them before. What does that say to them? What does it say to our fellow citizens, your constituents, to businesses and people looking to move here? It says that this community celebrates those who fought the oppression of our black brothers and sisters. It says that we want to alienate a quarter of our current population. It says that rebellion is more important than positive contributions to society. We should give them a monument that we should be proud of and celebrate our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Allison Antune. Ms. Allison, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Allison Antune, 1111 Ryan Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70601.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for holding this meeting. Um, I'm a local attorney. I think we can all agree that history is important. Nobody wants to erase history. We learn from history. However, we don't need statues to teach history. The South's defender, the South's defender monument teaches us nothing about the Civil War or slavery. Statues are symbols, and they're erected to honor and glorify. This statue honors and glorifies the Confederacy and people who fought to maintain owner, maintain owning other human beings and succeeding, succeeding from the United States of America. The monuments and statues our government officials choose to erect symbolize what ideals our government upholds. Letting the statue stay on the courthouse lawn sends the wrong message. The courthouse lawn is not a battle site. It has no historical significance as it pertains to the Civil War. The statue was erected some 50 years after the Civil War ended. The district court is a place that people go to receive justice and equal protection under the law. Heritage is defined as something that's handed down from the past as a tradition. The Confederacy only existed for five years. It's not heritage. It's not Southern pride. It's not Southern culture. The Confederates fought to defend the institution of slavery and secession from the United States.
Thirty seconds.
These succeeding states included those reasons in their written documents. Other countries around the world have removed statues and symbols of wars and leaders that no longer fit current, current ideals. You don't see statues erected to Nazi soldiers in Germany, even though many of those German citizens had ancestors who fought in the Nazi Army. I bet you wouldn't complain about erasing history or heritage when it comes to Nazi symbols, because everyone understands what those statues, uh, what those statues symbolize. This is your chance to be on the right side of history. Removing the statue won't cure racial injustice, but it's certainly a dang good start.
Thank you, Ms. Antune.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Antune. Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, is Ms. Erica McCready. Ms. McCready, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Erica McCready, 809 Kirby Street, Lake Charles. Look, we're all patriots here. Patriotism and heritage are used as reasons why the monument should stay, but I remind you that as patriots, our American heritage calls us to seek out injustice and eliminate opposite, um, oppression. This monument was erected during a very different time in Lake Charles, when Jim Crow era laws were made to remove political and economic gains made by black people during the Reconstruction. If we want to be part of a modern society, the statue must go. Many Southern Confederate statues were created long after the Civil War and built on public property instead of cemeteries or battlegrounds. There are better ways to honor the dead. These monuments were and still are hallmarks of oppression for the descendants of enslaved people. Because of embarrassing gaps in our Southern history education, many who say the statue does no harm have built their perception of these monuments on inaccurate and whitewashed information. These statues show reverence for an unpatriotic time. The thing is, history moves like a river. It can be dammed and rerouted, but eventually the history we are privileged to learn will flow in its full raging splendor. When American history is whitewashed, we see our country as fine the way it is, and we are ignorant to the plight of the oppressed. It is sacrilegious to omit history, but time is the great educator. History will always reveal itself. It may have been hidden in the walls in Germany or buried with Native Americans, but when history is properly taught, we know things could be better. And it is our civic duty to make it better for others. We cannot stand content to live amongst the oppressive tombs of the past. In Hamilton, America is called that great unfinished symphony. Our work to create a better Calcasieu Parish and a better America is never done, but moving the monument ensures that our history to come is in the right direction. Thank you for having this dialogue.
Thank you, Ms. McCready. Next is Mr. Michael Anton. Mr. Anton, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Anton, 1111 Ryan Street, Lake Charles, 70601. I'm an attorney. I'm in the courthouse three to five times a week. Particularly earlier in the week, the halls are filled with people who are worried, who are anxious, who are scared about the outcome of whatever they have going on. But at the very least, they and all of us can take comfort in knowing that under the United States Constitution, we're entitled to equal protection under the law, and at the very least, if we do get a bad outcome, it shouldn't be because of our skin color. But as soon as you, uh, walk out of the courthouse, there's a statue. And that statue does not commemorate men and women who fought and died for our Constitution. They fought against our Constitution. They fought for the Confederate Constitution, which expressly denied equal protection to African Americans. It didn't treat them as humans, but as property. It robbed them of the very individual inherent dignity that we all have as humans that are bestowed on us by God Almighty at our conception. That statute serves as a reminder of a time when African Americans were treated as less than human. At a time when government stepped on God's toes and took the rights of his children. It may have some historic value, but the courthouse lawn, where people expect that their skin color should not affect the scales of justice, is not the place for it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anton. Next is Mr. Mark Delphin. Mr. Delphin, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Mark Delphin, 626 Broad Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana. Gentlemen of the jury, we do not know what was in the hearts and minds of the people when they gathered on the courthouse lawns in 1915. We don't know if they were there to truly establish a monument to their fallen warriors that had died on battlefields 50 years before, nor do we know whether they were there to establish a, a monument to white supremacy. But here's what we do know. We do know that it was at the beginning of the Jim Crow era. We also know that there would be lynchings and that there would be voter suppression, and we also know that there would be terror. But we also know this. We also know that there was no monuments to the lash, no monuments to the rape, no monuments to the children sold and separated from their families. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, gentlemen of the jury, this statue is not where it is supposed to be. You all have been engaging in a listening tour for the last several months, and over that time, you have heard from respected judges, businessmen, lawyers, politicians, preachers, pastors, rabbis, the Economic Development Alliance, and you vote, and tonight, you've heard three times, the third time, from a very courageous 16-year-old Barb High School student who has beseeched you that this statue does not represent the values of our time. All of these folks, all of these folks have shared with you what you already know, that this statue is bad for economic development, it's bad for business, that it is divisive, that it is offensive, and that it is hurtful to people who pay taxes and raise their children in this community with good Christian values, just like you do. Ladies and, and gentlemen, take it down. Give it back to the Daughters of the Confederacy. Let them put it anywhere that they want, where they can pay reverence to it, but it must not be on public property, and it must not be at the halls of justice.
Thank you, Mr. Delphin. Next is Ms. Kat Gossi. Ms. Gossi, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Catherine Gossi. I live at 221 Vine Street in Salford, Louisiana. I'm here today to ask you to support the removal of the UDC Confederate statue that sits on taxpayer-funded property today. I implore you to take this decision seriously. If you have had to spend the past few months listening to your constituents via email, phone calls, or discussions in person, I'm sure you've heard every possible opinion, but we have no way of knowing how much weight our words mean in your minds. We are simply the people asking to be heard. You have your own minds to make up, and I'm sure they've been made, but what I ask you to consider today is a unique approach. I want to sort together to solve this. As a graduate of McNeese State University, a blue-collar worker, and an employee of the arts, I know that there is more than one solution to most creative problems. There are ways to reconcile this issue, I assure you. Let's think outside of the box. The city of Lafayette recently managed to respectfully remove a Confederate monument from one of their city properties. There are ways to do this, I assure you. Let's get creative. I've spoken to my juror, Tony Tramani, about his opinion, and he believes the statue is a monument to veterans, no matter what country they fought for. We are not asking that all memorials to American veterans be taken down. I'd like to remind everyone of the extravagant Veterans Memorial on the boardwalk, where we can honor those veterans who answered America's call to fight. It's been expressed that you're all worried about the cost of removal. Can I ask that CPPJ host an open forum online or otherwise to discuss creative approaches to the removal? Some of your constituents don't want to see it damaged. What if the community were to raise money to take it down? Before I mention the overall cost of the statue, I'd like to suggest some options. What if we reach out to organizations like Move the Binance Set or the National Trust for Historic Preservation? We are not at the end of the road on this issue. We are simply at a crossroads. We can creatively work on this solution as a community and take the right path towards healing the wounds of our past. There is no need to keep immortalizing the lost cause. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gossi. Is everyone okay? Anybody need a break or anything? Good? Mr. Paul Geary. Mr. Paul, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Paul Geary. I reside, I mean, 2205, I reside in the state of Louisiana. I am a citizen of these United States. First of all, everyone that is governing body, y'all swore to the Constitution, defend and protect. At the same time, we got a problem. I'm one of the original 25 years ago, this same governing body promised to put the blind lady of justice when they be finished building the new courthouse. Didn't happen. Now we revisiting this 25 years, it should've came down then. Ask the guard, take it down. Guard was talking to us, we not listening. So now we revisiting this 25 years later. And I'm asking this board, I ain't asking, I'm demanding. To be honest with y'all, y'all are policymakers. Y'all supposed to make changes where they needed as the time progressed. Y'all need to take a leadership role, that's why y'all got this position. We shouldn't even have this meeting. Y'all should've did it on your own. So now we got to force y'all to take it down. I don't know what decision, but what I, from what I see with the climate, y'all not gonna do it. Y'all gonna vote the other way. Well, if y'all vote to remove it, good for you. But it's, you know, hey, we're in a lack of humility in this community. And the other thing is, it's no, it's lack of humanity, humility. This is one city, this is one city. Even though I know this the parish seat of governor, but you in the Lake Charles, it's sitting in Lake Charles. And then as far as that are condolences to y'all, son, you in the city, that was a war that died. That man was murdered, all y'all say to the family. That was a weak, weak, weak resolution, y'all say. Now either y'all gonna get on the right side of history, or we gonna have to force y'all. And that's by any means necessary. Black lives do matter. Black lives matter. And now y'all gotta make a decision. Now if y'all make the wrong decision, that gonna say we got a bunch of ignorant and selfish people in this town that's in leadership role, not only ignorant, but selfish.
Mr. Geary.
Yes, sir.
We just letting you know that that's time.
Yeah, another thing, like I didn't give people time.
Mr. Gilery, thank you.
Yeah, I hear you.
You gotta come this way, Mr. Geary. Ms. Gail Sledge, please state your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Gail.
Gail Gilery Sledge. I live at 2345 C Street, and I come before you to tell you I'm in opposition of the monument staying on public, on the public square. I would like it to be removed. As a veteran, which you will see a lot of other veterans, I come to you, the statue does not represent me as a veteran. It doesn't represent my values. And I come here to put on record, because my family didn't get a chance to speak on that monument at that time, so on record, I speak for my brother, Preva Paul Gilery, who's a veteran, Army. I speak for my twin brother, Gary Arnold Gilery, who's a veteran. I speak for myself. I'm a veteran from the Air Force. I speak for Preva Gilery, my dad, Rita Paraden, the Go Bears and the La Days. And I know some of you might have family members, but I'm talking about the families that were my ancestors that was counted as property. I do not value that particular statue because it values the ideals. You've already heard a lot of people give you the reasons why they gave you the actual information on what it represents, not the whitewashed version you will hear later for the people who want to keep the statue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sledge. Ms. Sally McPherson. Ms. Sally, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Sally McPherson. My address is 1901 Lake Street. I was hesitant to speak on this issue because, as a white person, it is not my place to discuss whether or not something is racist. It is my job to listen to and amplify the voices of my BIPOC friends and family. As someone who has never and will never experienced systemic oppression because of the color of my skin, I couldn't presume to know the anger, frustration, and sadness that people of color experience when they see Confederate soldiers who fought to keep people enslaved lionized on the lawn of the courthouse that is supposed to represent freedom and justice for all. However, I decided to speak for two reasons. Firstly, I wanted the police jury to know that this is not a black and white issue. As shown this evening, I am far from the only white person who believes this statue represents racism. Secondly, I wanted the men and women of color in our community to know that we hear you and we are standing with you. I feel to the core of my being and under no uncertain terms that the statue paying tribute to the soldiers who fought against the United States of America should not exist in a place of honor as it does now. The Confederacy was a short-lived, traitorous organization that rebelled against the United States for many reasons, chief among those, to continue the subjugation of black people through the institution of slavery. I cannot say how strongly I feel that this statue should be taken down and moved to stop. I cannot say how strongly I feel that this statue should be taken down and moved to somewhere more appropriate. Others have said what I believe to be an incredibly accurate point. The fact of the matter is, the statue will come down.
Thirty seconds.
It's up to you to decide if you want to be on the right side of history and make that today or not. If you choose to keep a statue that represents racial hatred and division on the grounds of a building that is supposed to represent equality, you will be on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPherson. Mr. John O'Donnell. Mr. O'Donnell, would you state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is John O'Donnell, and I live at six four three Seventh Street in Lake Charles. Gentlemen, as already has been stated, this is a simple argument. The Confederate States of America was a short-lived, illegitimate, and unrecognized government that was founded for one purpose, to continue the enslavement of black people. Breaking away from the United States was an act of treason. There's nothing about the Confederate cause that we should honor or commemorate in any way in this parish. These statues are not just innocent remembrances of a benign history. These monuments celebrate a fictional version of sanitized Confederacy, ignoring the death, ignoring the enslavement, and ignoring the terror that it actually stood for. The men and women that this statue honor may have been warriors, but they were not patriots. Some here will argue against what I just said, and will say that the Civil War was about states' rights. But the historical record makes it very clear that the Civil War was about slavery, and to the extent that it was about states' rights, it was about states' rights to maintain slavery. In a letter encouraging Texas to secede and join the Confederate States, Louisiana Commissioner George Williamson was explicit. He argued that the Confederacy was needed to, quote, "preserve the blessings of African slavery." And the Confederate States, quote, "are bound together by the same necessity and determination to preserve African slavery." The presence of this monument has a lasting and profound impact on our black brothers and sisters in our parish. Every day that they pass this statue when they go to work, when they come downtown to have a good time and enjoy themselves, or more seriously, when they walk in to an institution that promises fair and equal justice, they are reminded that we are a parish that is actively honoring a time when the rights and freedoms of people of color did not exist. Every single one of you seated before me has black constituents. To vote in favor of allowing this monument to remain on public ground doesn't just put you on the wrong side of history, it's a slap in the face of the people of color that you were elected to represent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Mr. Ryan Abshire. Mr. Abshire, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ryan Abshire, no relation to the bleacher. I'm in the process of moving, so I'll be moving in the spring to three two six Puget Street. I'm at four five two two Sail Lane right now. It's become pretty clear what the major sides are saying. Some people have a arguably diluted fantasy that it represents some sort of history or patriotism of some kind, and it's obviously a racial issue. You know, there's lots of our neighbors outside who won't even come in because they feel like this is a, just a betrayal that it's 2020, and we even have to have this debate. There's a man in this building wearing a Confederate flag hat, and it's me. The Confederate flag is a white flag of surrender. They lost. Even if you don't want to say they were treasonous, even if you want to say they were patriots, they lost. So we need to go ahead and move on. Louisiana, where my people are from, after we were expelled from Nova Scotia, we've been part of, what, six nations at least? Part of us was No Man's Land, part of us was the Republic of Texas, part of us was France, Spain, I think even part of us might have been Mexico, the United States, and the Confederacy, all of which, except for, the Confederacy lasted more than five years. Statue's been up a hundred and five years, twenty-one times the length of the Confederacy. For about five years, I can justify it, after that, it's twenty times too many. Traitors may not deserve to die a traitor's death, but they deserve to hide their shame, and we don't need to celebrate it anywhere. The city council paid for part of the statue, so with interest, after a hundred and five years...
Thirty seconds.
I think that's enough money to pay for it to be taken down. Men downstairs put their hands over their hearts to the American flag, and they belittle African-American men who take a kneel for it, a knee for it. But they should kneel to a white flag because they lost their treasonous, and they're not patriots. To wear a Confederate flag is to embrace a legacy of hatred, but also of losers. Should we put up a statue of Brock Turner as the great defender of rape? I don't think so.
Mr. Abshire, thank you.
In honor and solidarity with my friends who are scared to come in here, I will not yield.
That's time. Mr. Abshire. Mr. Abshire. Mr. Abshire. Mr. Abshire.
I will not yield.
We're gonna go in, we're gonna go in recess for about two minutes.
We are now back at the special meeting today with another speaker. And the speaker is Ms. Javon Muhammad. Ms. Javon, state your name and address for the record, please.
Javon Muhammad, 2000 Appaloosa Street, Lake Charles. I want to start out by giving props and recognition to the speaker before me because I think that that has been a story of the black experience fighting for rights in America is protesting and risking yourself and your body. And I want to channel that energy through John Lewis today, who always encouraged us to get into good trouble. And so I hope that this person before me will be okay. And I commend him for his actions because that's what it takes and that's probably what it's going to take. America was founded and built on slavery and racism. That's a fact. Every decision that has been made since the arrival of Africans was based in race. Here in the South, the greatest crime against humanity in American history was committed, and that's the crime of chattel, brutal slavery. And these are facts. Today, we are here to ask for the removal of the statue. Tomorrow, may be a different story. It is offensive to stand before you in a city almost, if not half-black, and ask to be seen, to be heard, to be humanized. We have been reasonable and considerate today and throughout history. We've had to fight for every right we've got. America has never did the right thing because we asked. We've asked for the statue to be relocated, not destroyed. And that was kind of us. We asked for it to be placed in a more appropriate setting, which is a museum. And there's precedence for that because there are other races and ethnicities here who have history preserved in museums. Around the country, we are seeing symbols of oppression come down. And why is it so difficult here? Why are you treating those you call, whatever it is you call them, like this? If the black people who have cried out to you have not been enough throughout this whole listening tour or whatever happened, maybe the voice of the young, brilliant white people who came before you will move you because the world is changing. And you can be on the right side of history or you can do your thing. But if you fail us this time, it will continue to move forward and you will be challenged legally.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad.
You will not get away with this.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad.
And thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. I now call the meeting to order. We will now hear comments from the speakers in opposition to move in the monument. Our first speaker is JW Helms.
Helms.
JW Helms. Mr. JW, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
JW Helms, 716 Royal Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana. I would like to read a piece of correspondence from William J. Bosnick Jr. from Lafayette. Y'all should have received a copy of this, and I would like to read it into the record. Dear Calcasieu Parish Police Jury, as you're probably well aware, petroleum, agriculture, and tourism are important economic drivers in southern Louisiana. This individual is employed full-time in the tourism industry, which is already struggling with COVID-19 crisis. So he cannot urge you in strong enough terms to keep the historic outdoor sculpture dedicated to soldiers from the parish who perish defending their homes and families. Not only is the right thing to do in order to recognize veterans of all wars, some of which, like Vietnam, can be considered controversial, but it's also a wise move because heritage tourism is important for all of southwest Louisiana. Countless tourists come to Louisiana not for the casinos, but for the rich heritage and culture uniquely found here. To remove historic cultural monuments, which never can be replaced, is profoundly disruptive to the tourism industry and the wrong message from a state and parish which cherishes the service of its armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Mr. Helms, Gunwing. Next is Michael Jones. Michael Jones. Mr. Jones, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Name is Michael Jones. I live at P.O. Box 1318 in Iowa, Louisiana. And see, my statement is this: For fallen soldiers, for veterans, for heritage, that's what the South Defenders Memorial Monument stands for. Nothing more and nothing less. It is in exactly the right place now because the soldiers were called into military service by the governor of this state and organized here. It would also be a terrible precedent to remove a historical monument to men who gave their lives in defense of their homes and family. It would put into jeopardy every other historic monument in this parish. Please do not vote to remove the monument. It's exactly where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones. Next is Kurt Corville. Mr. Corville, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Kurt Corville, 6069 Tom A. Bear Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70607.
Thank you, Mr. Corville.
At the time the statue was dedicated in 1915, it was in commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the end of the war, making it altogether fitting and proper to do this, as was happening across the rest of the country, including the northern states. The themes of the dedication were peace, reconciliation, and unity of the nation and the hearts of the people. Union veterans were also attending and were thanked for the emancipation of the nation. The monument is altogether proper and fitting. My great-great-grandfather was the Louisiana Confederate. My parents taught me at a very young age to have honor and respect for all who fought for this country. My parents never missed opportunity to stop at a Civil War battlefield or cemetery to teach us honor and respect for all that fought there or were buried there, north and south. That statue on the courthouse grounds reminds me of just that: Honor and respect for my great-great-grandfather and for all that fought for this country, regardless of the flag that you choose to fly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corville. Next is Mr. Sam Dolan. Dolan, I'm sorry, Mr. Sam Dolan.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Dolan, I go by Sam. Thank you so much for having me here. I was raised up in Lake Charles all my life. I played in the park across the street and on the cannon over there all my life, and it never was regarded as anything defensive, about anything. Played with black kids all my life, worked with black people all my life, in and out hours every day, had them as my best friends, was in business with them. I'm a missionary evangelist. I go to India, Africa, South America, and the streets of this city. I'm at filling stations inside, outside, I'm everywhere. One thing I do not hear is anything about a statue. I talk to people everywhere I go, gas pumps, I talk to them at the fruit stand, I talk to them everywhere I go. There is never, in the general public consensus everywhere I go, is there a conversation about a statue? People are not crying at Dollar Tree. It's the statue. People are not crying at Kroger's. It's the statue. What they're looking for is employment. They're looking for a way to make it in this city. When I go down there, I work on the streets of North Lake Charles all the time. And you know what they're doing? They're working. They are working. That is what they're interested in. As the one comment was made earlier, there is violence that follows this movement. And it doesn't take much watching the news about how this goes. And so if we want to subject our city to this kind of thing, I am disappointed severely that pastors have not made the move to try to bring this thing to a close and bring peace and justice to this city the way that it should be. And everyone get along and do business and make this city work and be on the calendar and on the map as a city that handles its business properly and well and that its citizens get along well. So it can get along making jobs, having decent conversations, and getting along to make things work out and not being at odds with each other. There are no blacks and there are no whites.
Mr. Dolan, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next is Mr. Scott Fusile. Mr. Scott, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Scott Fusile, 210 John King Road in Ragley, Louisiana. I'm a U.S. citizen with 14 Confederate ancestors who are recognized legal combatants. In the word "history" lies the word "story." In everything pertaining to history, a story is there to be told. Whether the story is favorable or unfavorable is left to the interpretation of the people that come after the event. It does not matter how it is interpreted, only that it is an historical event. The South Defender Monument became a part of the Calcasieu, an Imperial Calcasieu Parish, when it was erected for unity and harmony among the races, and it's still today. Unfortunately, it appears that there is a faction seated in politics that seeks to have it removed solely for the purpose of advancing their political careers. Another faction says it is a reminder of a very uncomfortable and sad period in American history. Then there are those who see the monument for which it was designed. In all cases, its purpose is to teach you of our history, good, bad, or otherwise. You cannot change history to suit your views or your needs. There is only history. Artifacts like this monument have been used as teaching methods to show the accomplishments of mankind, events, or of a time gone by as a reminder of the formation of our country. If these continue to be taken away, we will be like any other dictatorship from Vladimir Lenin to Hugo Chavez, where history begins with their reign of power. Please do not fall victim to the cancel culture sweeping our nation. Tonight, the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury has the opportunity to continue to be a force for direction and leadership by keeping the monument to be used for teaching the story and symbol of American history for all present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusile. Next is Mr. Archie Toomes. Mr. Archie, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Archie Toomes, 615 Ginger Street, Salford, Louisiana, 70663. I'm here tonight, I feel like I'm wasting my time. This is kind of getting stupid and repetitive. I've come up here for the last eight or nine years doing this same thing, defending a monument that doesn't need defending. That monument was put up there to help heal. If you can look at that monument and you see hate, you need to go see a psychiatrist. You have something else wrong with you. That monument does not project hate. That monument's never owned a slave. That's all I got to say. God bless everybody here, and God bless the Southern Defenders Monument.
Thank you, Mr. Toomes. Mr. Toomes, you go on the round, please. Next is Mr. Stephen Noblet. Mr. Stephen, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Stephen Noblet, 112 Lightning Street, Salford, Louisiana. Thank you. I want to thank all of you. You've been very gracious, put a lot of time into it, put up with the whole lot. I heard a word from the previous speaker. I've heard a lot of hate, a lot of bitterness, a lot of unforgiveness. We see it all over our country now. Anarchists can start something, first thing you know, they've got a crowd following them. Thanking they're doing a good thing. I'm going to kind of jump around. I've emailed, I've written four or five times. I really believe that the monument should stay. I don't think there's anything to do with slavery, with hate, with racism, or anything else. I've come to that after many years, with an open Bible, with tears and grief. I've read many, many hours for many years about the Civil War. I regret about slavery. You had people preaching for it from their Bible and people preaching from the Bible against it. Obviously, somebody was missing it. It was a sad thing in our history. I've covered the Constitution. I've heard it misrepresented here grossly. I say some people, with all the trouble in their heart, they need the Lord Jesus. They need peace. And moving this statue is not ever going to change that one bit. Some of them do, like the former speaker said, they need a psychiatrist. And others just need a historian because they've misrepresented the truth. I don't want to do that. I will help a black person, and I have, just as quick as I will white or any other color, whatever God puts on my heart. I believe moving the statue is playing along with a narrative that's dividing our country in this way.
Thank you, Mr. Noblet. Your time is up, Mr. Noblet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Noblet. Next is Mr. Gordon Simmons. Mr. Simmons, state your name and address for the record, please.
Gordon D. Simmons, 4555 Highland Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana. I'm a very close, 70-year-life-long resident of Calcasieu Parish and a descendant from a double handful of Confederate veterans. I thank y'all for having us tonight. It's really appropriate to me tonight that we're meeting here in this Department of Homeland Security Command Center because 159 years ago, the state of Louisiana and Calcasieu Parish put out a call to their citizens to defend their homeland. And that's exactly why that statue was put up. It was put up to honor the soldiers, not the Confederate states of America, not slavery, anything else. It is a war memorial monument to veterans who are recognized as United States veterans by the Veterans Administration today. Tonight, I've heard two main complaints for removing the statue. Both of them are based on perception and feelings. The third one was a statement of treasonous or traitorous behavior, which is a factual, incorrect, provable, illegal argument. The main complaint is on people being offended. Our Constitution guarantees you life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. There is no guarantee against being offended, nor is there any law against you being offended. The other statement is how would people expect to receive a fair trial walking past this statue? That's a slap in the face and an insult to every judge, ever prosecutor, ever defense attorney, and ever juror that ever served in that courthouse to think they are that weak and spineless to be influenced by some stone and cast metal. This political insanity and scrubbing of our history has got to stop. Look, appeasement doesn't work. It doesn't work anywhere in our country. It gets worse. And I ask y'all to end it here and now. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Mr. Tommy, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tommy Curtis. I live at 1928 21st Street here in Lake Charles. Okay. I just have a very brief comment. The year 1915 has been, has been mentioned often as a, some kind of nefarious year because of the year then, that, that year was chosen for nefarious purposes, for the dedication of the monument. However, and although many have questioned the timing of this dedication, as if the timing actually had something to do with some evil view. So why 1915? There are four honorable, major, timely, and motivating factors. The first is simple math will illustrate. Is that 1915 marked 50 years since the end of the war, which was in 1865, making the semi-centennial a major motivating factor in state construction, statue construction. Secondly, since the old soldiers were dying off, family members wanted to honor those who are still around, and we all knew somebody, when World War II was ended in 1945, 50 years later, in 1995, we remember, you know, that, that we were concerned they were growing old. And there were, there were monuments being, being dedicated, and then Tom Hanks himself was actually endorsed it. A 21-year-old who went to war in 1861 was 60 years old in 1900, 75 years old in 1915. The old soldiers are dying off, of course, we wanted to honor them. Thirdly, both of the preceding points contributed to a simultaneous surge in the number of statues erected to honor Union veterans. It was only natural the Confederate, the Dennis wanted to follow suit at the same time. Obviously, there could be little doubt that they were built with some urgency caused by the shrinking numbers of veterans. Fourth, post-war impoverished Southerners did not have enough money to pay for memorials, and this poverty delayed Confederate statue building, the Great Surge, which occurred between 1900 and 1920. Not with, so, there were those who claimed quite erroneously that the quote-unquote intended location of the monument was to quote-unquote enhance white supremacy in our parish and state. Nothing could be more cynical and nothing could be more true.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Before we go to the next one, check the mic, see if the mic is okay. We're gonna, we're gonna hear from Butch Maloney. Hey, Mr. Butch, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Butch Maloney. I live in Lake Charles, Louisiana, 415 South Lake Court. And I had a bunch of papers here to go over everything that everybody just went over, so I'm not even gonna look at it. I just wanted to let y'all know something. I've been in this building, I guess, for two hours. I've met all kinds of black men and women in here. We've talked, we've cut up, we've talked about LSU. Nobody brought anything up about this dang monument. The monument is there because of our heritage. You cannot change the frickin' past. People need to get over it. There's hatred out there, and the hatred seems to be coming from the other side. The blacks and the whites that we hear are against it. I heard three times tonight threaten you guys that if their statue's not torn down, that they're gonna move it. That's the kind of stuff we're putting up with. If we let them get away with that, what else are they coming after? We're changing all the names of these schools, changing the name of roads, changing the names of buildings in this state? That's bull corn. Are these people that's complaining about that changing their names? If they could change their name from Lee, from Washington, so all the guys that went to school with that are black, they have different names? I'm not gonna know who they are anymore? This is ridiculous. It's time for this crap to stop. Excuse my language. But I had a big old spiel about blacks having slaves, but everybody knows all this. You can look up on the internet and find anything you want to find for or against what we're fighting for. This is bull. It's gotta stop. And we need to stop it here. Something's wrong with this country if this kind of stuff continues to go on, especially they could come here and threaten you, saying, "If you don't take it down, we'll get somebody that will." That happened three times tonight. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Raspberry, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Wade Raspberry. Current address is Dallas, Texas, via 2448 Walker Road in Carlos, Louisiana. Drove down here late last night from Dallas just to listen, learn, and state what I think really should happen. You guys stated that you've been getting feedback from the community via all kinds of platforms, which is awesome. Why would we want, why would, if I were you guys, this has already been voted on before in the past, so it's kinda like Double Jeopardy, right? Can't be tried twice. But nonetheless, why not, why not put this on the ballot in November? All these people claim they want something done. There's 20 people outside protesting.
Mr. Raspberry, stick to the monument being moved, if you don't mind.
Well, the deal is, the vote should be by the people of the parish, not 15 people in this room. I say the monument shouldn't go. As the gentleman before me stated, it's, it's a memory of the people that died fighting the war. Shouldn't be taken down. But why, I mean, you guys were threatened three times, like he said. Put it to the vote of all the people in the parish. Let them vote. Then the, the public speaks. That's what this country's about. Voices to be heard, not decisions made by a handful of people. No disrespect intended, but from a political standpoint, wherever you ride, it alleviates any kind of stress. If you put it on the ballot, let the people vote. Let the people's voices be heard, not 15, 20 people for two minutes, and then y'all talk, read social media, all the stuff that you've been doing. That's just a consideration. It was an idea, and I think it's a good idea. Thanks for letting me speak. Good luck. Stay safe. Please let it stay where it is.
Thank you, Mr. Raspberry. Mr. Madison, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Lost the hearing aid because of these while back. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to meet with you.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Jay Madison, 133 Petit Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70605.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm going to approach this from a little different, I guess, standpoint. I came down here in 1965, January the 1st, courtesy of Uncle Sam. I was stationed at Fort Polk. I came into a unique culture. I've been here ever since. I've grown to love it. I find no problems with the statue that's out there. It represents something that happened 160 years ago, and for those who are having trouble with it, I wish that you would get off of it. This is gonna be maybe a little offensive, I don't know. But the thing that offends me right now, some of these same individuals, not all, they kneel when the national anthem is being, or the flag is being raised. That's despicable. They burn the flag. That's despicable. You know, they want to change some of these same individuals that are wanting to move this flag or this monument, want to change our national anthem. Something's crazy with our nation. You started out the evening here by saying that we had like 850 people that supported staying it and about 60, you know, that wanted to remove it. That should be enough said to me. However, if it is removed from the premises, I can see some point in doing that, but please give it some dignity as to what it represents. It's been pointed out that it has nothing to do with slavery. I think that's where these people are wrong. Move it over to Memorial Park where it deserves to be put, and the people that fought for this deserve to be put in a place of dignity.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Thank you. Mr. Madison, that way, please. Ms. Vicki, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Vicki Ellander Campbell, 1511 Jeff Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70605. And I just want to say real quick before I start, all of y'all, I put a green copy of a letter in your folder, and I would appreciate it if y'all haven't had the time to read it. I put it this color so it would stand out. I would appreciate if y'all would read it. Jacob Ryan is my great-great-great-grandfather, and I have a lot of our family history in here. Of course, he's the one who gave the grounds, the courthouses on. Okay, I'm ready to start now. History is history, facts are facts. You can't undo the Civil War. People should be glad it ended. It happened. It ended slavery, and you should celebrate that. I don't know anyone who said last Memorial Day, calm down here, "I'm going to work today. It's a Civil War holiday, and I'm not going to honor it." After the Civil War, Southern women started a tradition of decorating Civil War graves of the North and South on May 30th. It was known as Decoration Day. Virginia set it aside as the National Day of Observance in the North, did the same in 1868. Later, it was changed to Memorial Day. It's now a day to honor those who gave their lives in all wars, just as our monument now represents to us those who fought in all the wars and lost their lives. Richard's Topical Encyclopedia, New York, states in reference to the Civil War, "All Americans must cherish as a precious heritage the memory of the high-hearted courage and devotion of the South in those bitter days." The monument has a lot of meaning to many families here whose ancestors have lived here for generations. It's, it represents a common soldier, not the leaders. It was put here to honor peace, reconciliation, and unity. We need to stop nitpicking. One thing reminds a person of slavery, but something else that should doesn't.
Thirty seconds.
The monument is not causing anyone repression. It doesn't change anything within the walls of our courthouse. It's just sitting there as it has for the last 105, 105 years, most of which no one has had a problem with it. We should all be proud we'd live here. As bad as it was for our ancestors, we need to be thankful. However, we got here, that we're living in the greatest country in the world and not enduring their hardships. I know I am. Pulitzer Prize winner Russell Baker said, "We all come from a past, and children ought to know what it was that went into their making, to know life is a braided cord of humanity stretching up from time long gone."
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you.
Mr. Thorne, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Scott Thorne. I'm at 422 Mall Street here in Lake Charles, 70601. Kind of altered what I wanted to say this evening a little bit based upon what I've heard others say earlier this evening. One of the things that was mentioned a lot by those that come earlier this evening was multiculturalism. But attendance in multiculturalism require that we accept those things of others that we do not like. We're not always gonna agree on everything, but part of being an American is that we accept those things because that's what we do to become one. Now, I realize not everybody sees that same thing that I see and others see when they look at that South Defender's Monument. What I see is a veterans memorial. And I'm sure there's a lot of veterans in this room. And every one of those wars had its controversies. So 150 years from now, when people look at the controversies differently, are they exposed to just discount your service? Say that it wasn't worthwhile, that what you did was evil because under their beliefs to, at that point in time, it changes? I don't think that history changes. It's not fluid. History has named dates and places and things that occurred. And there were multiple individuals who all had their own individual point of view that did what they did at that point in time.
Thirty seconds.
Every one of them went to service because Calcasieu Parish asked them to, because the state of Louisiana asked them to. For that monument to be removed would be the equivalent of saying, "We do not respect the service that you gave us." That's all I have to say. That's what it means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Mr. Thorne, this way. Next is Mr. Ray Davide. Mr. Ray, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Ray Davide, 4135 Almalyne. Thank y'all for the, Lake Charles, Louisiana. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak here, and I know there's a lot of unrest about all this, and by no means this to offend anybody. You know, since the tragic murder of George Floyd, it's caused a lot, a spork, prejudice and a lot of unrest in this country. And it's just a massive unrest within the country, you know, as horrifying, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place. As horrifying as his murder was, it started as not only a peaceful protest, but then it increased to murders, polluting, defacement of property, the public, and so forth. We're here concerning that the removal of, displacement of the South Defender's Monument erected in 1915 as a 50-year anniversary, as y'all have been told today. I feel it being a justice to the men that had served back in that time. You know, they were, some said that they were, they were against the United States. Well, you know, they fought for their, for their beliefs. They were, they were American citizens. They were, they died American citizens. You know, unfortunately, there's gonna be, you know, there was wars after that, there was, or before that, Vietnam War, World War II, many other scourgements throughout history, and unfortunately, there's probably gonna be some in the future. To many, the statute symbolizes
Thirty seconds.
White supremacy and it's to slight black Americans, but to so many others, it does not mean that. It just, it's about remembering the history of your loved ones and our American people that died in this country or for this country. Unfortunately, I mean, what's next? They're gonna just take away the crucifix, they're gonna take away, you know, Vietnam, the Vietnam Statue Memorial, others, Martin Luther King statues, any of those statues, anything could be. Thank y'all. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Thank y'all for the opportunity.
Mr. Davide, thank you. Next is Mr. James Strahan. Mr. Strahan, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm James Strahan, 3023 Crockett Street, Westlake, Louisiana. Forty-one years as an educator. I'd like to say that I'm diametrically opposed to the removal of this statue. Because this statue was not established to promote slavery, or to say slavery was good. It was a horrible institution, but it happened. That's history. We cannot change history. But some people cannot understand that. I'm nearly 80 years old. How many times have I seen this same situation occur? A group gets disturbed over something? Okay, let's, let's tackle the statue. Let's take the statue down. Yeah. And it goes on and on, and then finally it settles down, and then we go back to the routine. But I have never had any trouble working with any race of people. So when I say a certain group, I don't mean that as a derogatory statement. I just mean that some people get real worked up over something, just like the death of Mr. Floyd. That was a horrible, horrible thing. But this set off this, this big thing about, you know, Black Lives Matter, and we're gonna to change history, and this and that and another. To me, all lives matter. But I'll tell you, if you, if you tear the statue down, you're going to be giving one group revenge, because that's what they're after. They can't help it.
Thirty seconds.
They're thinking about revenge. But let me, let me leave this with you. Remember, vengeance is mine, saith the Lord. So we cannot satisfy this revenge by tearing down something that means a lot to a lot of people, and I'm one of those people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Strahan. Mr. Strahan, Duttway. That was all of the speakers from both sides. I'm now going to open the floor for discussion from the jurors. Mr. Smith.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all the people that came before us and, you know, said their comments, and we definitely appreciate that. Me personally, I'm in favor of removing the statue from the courthouse ground. No one is trying to forget history. History itself is embedded in museums, books, and a person's mind. The South Defender Monument should, should not be destroyed. The whole purpose is just to be moved from the courthouse ground where justice and public business and voting takes place. I really don't know. I really can't speak for what happened in 1915. I read that the police jury gave $500 to the building fund for the statue. But in 2020, which has been, you know, a very, very devastating year with unemployment, economic unrest, business closure, and the biggest COVID-19 that has brought us death and sickness throughout the whole country and also the world, there would not be a discussion to put a statue there today. So why are we planning on trying to keep it there? In, like, in the next few months, we, the police jury, you know, we will start a major construction project right around the corner. New offices, new public buildings, courthouse, garage, a very, very nice project that the whole world should see. But keeping that statue there, you know, is kind of like making it the gateway for the world to see. So that's why I feel that statue, you know, should not make an impression on what the real world sees that Calcasieu stands for. We look at different groups coming, talk to us over the last few months. You know, I think personally myself, I want to speak for myself personally, you know, I feel that the statue, the monument itself is like a really, a big distraction in an actual parish. It's kind of like two kids that are fighting over a toy, going back and forth, back and forth, 25 years, going back and forth. And the only way to try to, a parent would actually have peace in their household, which I look at Calcasieu Parish as a household, is actually remove that toy. So then, you know, everybody could basically live in harmony and have peace throughout. You know, just tonight, we had so much security, so much things laid out, you know, for a statue. You know, somebody called me just a while ago when I was walking in, want to know when they're going to have a public meeting about their ditch, their, their actual drainage. You know, we do have a lot of issues to deal with in this parish that was ongoing, you know, infrastructure, everything that goes on, we have to worry about. But the statue, like I say, is a very, very big distraction, and honestly, I think that that's why, you know, it has to be removed. Also, but I say, the decisions we make today, tonight, or whatever, is based on present day. It doesn't really affect us today, but is really for the future. We have to look at building things for the future that are going to affect our kids and our grandkids down the road. Yes, tonight, our vote will be on the records, and we will make history. That's something that cannot be changed. Tonight will be history, and we will be voting tonight on whether or not to remove it August 13, 2020. You know, I received so many calls, you know, we've been getting calls for the last couple of months, every day. Honestly, mine is about 50, 50, uh, 50. Some people want it, some people don't want it. You know, I've been told myself, like, like tonight, you know, this decision is going to affect my political career, which only been eight months. But, you know, I just say, you know, call me whatever you want to call me. I'm going to make the decision that I want to make and move on. You know, some people may say I'm, I'm basically a one, a one-terner. But hey, you know, that's, that, it is what it is. You know, I do not take this office for, for granted, and I do feel that, you know, no one wants to destroy this actual monument. Here, like I say, history is there, history should be observed, but it's not a place to be on that courthouse grounds. So tonight, you know, we can start right now by, you know, changing history, making history, whatever you want to call it, and actually be, and actually be, and vote to remove the actual statue itself. You know, like I said before, you know, things will not change overnight, you know, not at all. You know, taking down the statue, you know, will not change much, but it's a start, to start right now to get things going in that right direction. So that's basically how I feel, you know, as of tonight, you know, I stand in favor of removing the monument from the Calcasieu Parish courthouse grounds. Thank y'all, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving the statue. I just think that we can find a better place for it, because the people want it gone. I really want to kind of move from there, but I hope we just come up with a good decision to make a good decision tonight. And I think the jurors, we all work together, and I hope after this decision, that we still can move forward, and we got bigger and better plans. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the jury? Mr. Landry. I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Landry's good.
No, go ahead, Mr. Barti.
I'll wait till after Mr. Landry.
He wants you to go first.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, as an African-American, quite naturally, for the symbolic nature of the statue, I just think the courthouse grounds is just not the best place for it. I think there's a place for it in history, but let's just face it, the Confederacy was only five years. You know, we start every one of our meetings with a prayer and with the Pledge of Allegiance. We start our meetings speaking to a God that we're all created in His image. And then we recite a pledge that says liberty and justice for all. That monument does not symbol, is not a symbol of either one of those statements. And that's pretty much the reason why. I just can't see as a body us continuing to deal with this same situation that should have been put to rest a long time ago. To me, times have changed. I look at the fact that the police jury itself is on record for contributing monies for that statue. That, in my eyes, was a mistake. And I think as a body, we, some of us, we, we haven't been serving that long. I don't know everyone, you know, I'm hoping to get to know most of you guys. But I'm just out of the mindset that we all created in the image of God. That's, that symbol doesn't, that monument does not symbolize that. And that's really why I just can't say that it should remain where it is. I can say there's a place where we can memorialize it and do it in a way that dignifies not only the statue, but also can also dignify what the people that want the statue to remain there for what they say in their minds and in what their hearts, what it symbolizes to them. That statue should be in a museum, and that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barti. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted, first of all, make a comment that, I forgot the gentleman's name, but he, he came up and wanted to put it on a ballot. First, I just wanted to comment on the gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he wanted, thought about putting it on a ballot, and believe me, I think all of us up here would just love that if it was only that easy. Unfortunately, the state law does not allow us to do that. It's very, very clear on what can go on a ballot and what cannot. And I know some months ago, that was proposed to us, and our legal counsel checked all that out, and we can't do that. So, and I'm sure there, I've heard that from more than one person. So I know there's a lot of people out there that thinks, hey, that's a great idea, probably including all 15 of us, to be honest with you. But that's not the case. Since I've been here, this has probably come up four times. Every few years, it comes back up. And it will probably continue to come back up. Now, this is the first time we've actually had a hearing on it. And honestly, I just think about all the man hour, we have wasted so much time. I mean, we truly have. I, I would love to spend this much time on drainage and people coming down here and trying to help us solve that problem. And when we talk about the statue, I'm going to tell you, my first thoughts, just leave it alone. It's not hurting anything. And then through these weeks and weeks and talking to all these people, the one, the one thing that I think that I realized, as you know, if I was black, I probably wouldn't think that. And I've talked to a lot of people, successful black people, that really, it doesn't bother them, they're not thinking about that statue every day. But whenever you get right down to it, does it bother them? Yeah, it kind of does. And, and it means something different, even though they'll recognize, yeah, I know, I know it's to celebrate the veterans and all that, they don't see it the same way. And, and I guess that's what makes this so difficult. You got one statue, on the back of it, it tells you what it's all about. And that's another thing. Got many, many phone calls, almost all of which, leave it alone. Most of those people, they've never stood in front of this statue, and they can't tell me what the statue actually says, especially on the back of it, because they've never been there. So it's very important to everybody, but it's not so important that they actually went down there and have ever looked at it, which is, you know, part of the problem is what's going on on the national news. That, that's really the issue. That, that is the problem. Because I think we could come together and we could come up with solutions, but you've got that pressure of what's going on nationally, which I think almost all of us can agree, we don't agree with what, what we're seeing. But it's definitely hasn't helped the situation at hand. Personally, you know, the spot that it was in was probably the best spot, 1915, to put it. You know, if you were going to put a similar statue today, I don't think it would go right there, you know? And I understand the significance that the gentleman mentioned of the courthouse and all of that. And I get that. Something else that I don't know if y'all have noticed, a lot of the people that came before us tonight were young people, younger than all of us. And most of those younger people don't see things the way that we see things. And I, I think as the years go by, regardless of what happens tonight, they see things differently than we do, and things are going to change. Whether that's right or wrong, that's not my, really my decision to make. But I do think that, that things are going to change. Also, through this process, we had different options that, that we came across, that different people came up with, that I think were, were really good options that actually could bring people together. And, and look, I'm not saying it's going to bring everybody together, because you've got people on each extreme that you're not going to make happy regardless of what we end up doing. But I'm just saying, I think they were acceptable. And, and things that you could do with the statue that, that would honor those veterans and do it in a very respectable way, but yet it'd still be moved. And, and I think those options are out there. All that isn't going to be solved tonight, but that's something, you know, if, if nothing happens tonight, that maybe in the future, things calm down, we can come together and, and come up with something. That's, that's what I would hope for, anyway. But I, I think doing nothing are, is, we're just kicking a can down the road. I can tell you, it's come, it's going to come back to you. It just will. And I can tell you that from experience. And this is not comfortable for any of us to be in here. Rather, we're white or black, I mean, these, our black jurors, they don't want to get those phone calls. They're getting hammered just like all the rest of us. They're just getting the opposite phone call that most of us are getting. But that's all I got to say. I appreciate it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Markentale.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were elected to do this. That's why people put us in this position. We were never told it would be easy decisions. We're doing it in a democratic way. We all, a lot of us may have different beliefs. It does not make us un-American or less American. If it gets kicked down the road, it gets kicked down the road. That's what we're here for. We got elected to do this. I do think down the road, there are some options to look at, but at this point in time, we're here to vote on one issue. Myself personally, for leaving it alone, I don't mind telling anybody that. Another thing is, a lot of people, I don't think realize, almost two-thirds of Calcasieu Parish population lives outside Lake Charles. So, you know, but we're all going to leave here. I don't see any problems amongst any of us jurors, myself, Mr. Smith, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Barti. It's the American way. We all have our own beliefs, and, and we're here tonight to vote on an issue. And I just want to thank all the jurors for standing up for their belief and their constituents' belief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I call the question.
I think there was, two hours ago, ma'am. Two and a half.
Well, Ms. Kathy, we're going to
That's right. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. And Mr. Lewis made the motion. The motion on the floor, Mr. Smith.
And we're going to call
To
Remove
To remove the South Defenders Monument from the grounds of the Calcasieu Parish Courthouse.
Okay, Ms. Kathy. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
All righty. And this will be a reverse roll call vote this time. Mr. Tremonti?
No.
Mr. Stelly?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
No.
Mr. Markentale?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Burley?
No.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
No.
Mr. Angerpot?
No.
And Vice President Appshire? The motion failed with five yeas, four yeas, and 10 nays.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, let the record show that I would yes vote for the removal of the statue, please.
Yes, sir.
So, I need a motion to adjourn. We are now adjourned.